Good afternoon and welcome to the City of Helena Budget Session. This meeting is called to order. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to revise this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Madam Holoschok, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioner Mayor, and team members who are here tonight to complete our third working session on the budget. Just a quick, a couple of clarifications and then I want to share my screen with you all first. This is the first time I'm going through this process with you all, so I appreciate your patience. I understand there is confusion and I want to make sure that about how these play out next. So I want to recap what the next conversation looks like before we start tonight. I understand tonight we have at our, at our feet, a couple of presentations by Public Works and by Community Development. These are in response to the requests that happened at our last meeting. I also want to make sure and share to you all a revised summary table of the total changes that we were discussing and the ideas that I brought to you all and recommendation on how to structurally balance. Again, the conversation was around the distinction that we've been having the distinction between the legally legal definition in Montana of a balanced budget versus a structurally balanced budget. And just want to, I'll reiterate that tonight. Also, any questions that you offer up for us tonight will result in a newly revised draft document, which we are intending to post for the May 26th, which is next Wednesday, the May 26th, next working session. There are still portions of the document that are missing related to content. Those are mainly the glossary, table of contents, also the letter from the commission to the community, excuse me, as well as a community profile of, on Helena. Also revisions will include the definition of structural balance and the legal balance if you are okay with the approach that was proposed last time. And again, I'll go over that in a second, but before we get started, I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for your support in this new process and in looking at this from a holistic point of view of building a work plan and then implementing a work plan, implementing a budget that supports a work plan, which ultimately support your strategic outcomes as agreed upon. So during our last conversation, I shared the idea of reducing the cost of living from, as suggested based on the methodology that was provided by our finance director to 1.1% cost of living adjustment. And that I hold off on not only that cost of living adjustment, but also the in-class current staff pay adjustments and also new positions that are being proposed until September. Doing so would then allow us to return with the adopted final budget. One I pointed out last time was that there is a distinction between budgeting and actuals. And the revision of our budget from budgeted to actuals results in a final budget. So while we will be meeting the expectations of law by having a preliminary budget, adopting a final budget means we actually incorporate those final actual dollars. So I shared a chart last time, what that gap looks like. Really ultimately, my suggestion is that I hold off on these increases to existing staff, which are adjustments within them, those positions, the cost of living, as well as the new positions until I can, we can receive and review the September property tax and mill levy receipts for fiscal year 21. So that's adopting a final budget. So that's the structural balance and I'm going to share the screen here in a moment of the table which was sent to you in advance. And so that's one option. Another option is to utilize excess reserves to cover and then true up again with actual revenue. As you know, we have position vacancies. There are other dollars that actually over time play out, but ultimately when we build a budget, you build it for every position filled and every activity being completed. So those are differences between budget and natural. Ultimately, our hope is that we get to clarify any questions that you might have within each of the departments about the asks. And then Monday, want to recommend to you also for our fourth and final working session. We'll see, we may, you may need another one, so we'll find out Monday. But on Monday that we have presentations from the municipal court, the fire department and the police department. That should complete all of the presentations for all of the departments. Tonight, I know Commissioner Halliday had requested, and I apologize Commissioner O'Laughlin, I had neglected to include in my notes to you from meeting last, this last Monday, that Commissioner Halliday had pointed out a request to go back over the IT budget that's in this allocation. And I know you're a part of those conversations as well, so he was not able to attend. Another ask that I will bring to the May 26th meeting is the list of federal projects. The team has gone through, all of the federal dollars has put together a list of projects and identified not only how we could use our potential allocation as it comes through from the adopted president, new presidents, our dollars, but also some of the additional funds that have come through to incentivize transportation and wastewater separately as well. So those will come next, May 26th to that conversation, so you can have that full perspective. Those projects, like I shared on Monday, are really the in addition to space as opposed to the base space. So the base space is really where we're, we're working from in this budget. Also want to point one more thing out about this budget. We do not have any increases in fees or in assessments proposed, and that reflects the book of fees conversation earlier this year. Once we true up in September, our end of year FY fiscal year 21 actual receipts, then we will begin the conversation around, okay, what is it that we have? That is the methodology and then be more specific around repeatable methods. As I shared before in that book of fees conversation, some of the proposed fees did not have a repeatable method. And we are being very aggressive in trying to complete good research on those in the coming year. So a lot of good work by the team. Another point that was brought up was the movement of the debt out of the, off of the Gulf Fund and onto the general fund as the general fund was the obligation debt bond that was put forward and it wasn't a dedicated revenue bond. So that, that classification and clarification conversation took place on Monday. I did not get a decision out of the commission. I just want to make sure that you all know that that was a proposal that I brought forward. There was no, no decision there. And last, there's a staff summary sheet that is a part of your packet of budget, of the budget. When you receive it on the 26th, it'll have more detail around what that actual need is and why the position is being proposed. So it's a summary list right now of the FTE being proposed. And then you will also have short statements next to them as to what they are expected. I have those and have received those from each of the departments. So I'm going to quickly share my screen to you all. And this was the ask of Commissioner Halliday as well, Logan. The summary on how we could be structurally balanced. Do you have any questions of me on the next steps just before I share and get more in depth on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thanks for manager, just for clarification. Are you requesting that throughout, you know, the, we continue to provide feedback throughout the conversation today? And at the next one, you want that in real time, is that correct?
Absolutely. Keep, keep going, keep giving us feedback so that we can revise the document. So that when we get to June, when we actually bring to you that preliminary draft for adoption, you have, we have really tried to address any of your concerns on the outset. And then we can keep going forward on any other revisions you might have through to the end of June when we do the final adoption of that preliminary budget. And again, we will adopt a full final budget after we have receipts in and by September is when we believe that will be done.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, this, this chart is our attempt at trying to come up with a, I had, I had individuals outside, the team members outside of my brain and Sheila's brain to try and translate what we're saying in a way that could be clearer in what we're showing. So I'm going to read left, right, and then left, right. So for the general fund and mostly just the general fund, we were able to make accommodations within other funds because they're fee-based. Really, our concentration has been here with this balanced and structurally balanced conversation. So in the general fund, our projected actual cash balance is 10 million here. Then we are talking about an FY 21 excess reserves to be used for emergency contingency funding. That's 1.3 million. Now, these excess reserves are for FY 21. These are what we've been talking about, the one-time expense. These are one-time dollars and then the use of those dollars to help balance on one time. Now, if we were looking at just a balanced budget, we are there because you take all of the excess revenue and we are at a bottom line. But what we're actually talking about even more greatly, I think, is the structured budget conversation. And structured budget, it really goes after those issues that are not one-time. They're ongoing expenses. And so there's options around those. So the next column, this is the FY 22 budgeted new revenue for recurring expenditures. That's, that's 23 million here. What we are proposing and incurred is actually 25.4 million. That includes recurring current FTE adjustments, recurring 2.2 COLA, cost of living, the recurring new staff requests and then the overall maintenance and operations, management operations within the, within the organization as a response, as well as other one-time events. Those are all within the, this gap 1.6 million here. Even further detailed below, these are the recurring FTE adjustments that we were talking about. These are FTEs currently in place that we've identified that need to be adjusted. This is the total for the general fund, 2.2% cost of living adjustment. And the recurring new staff request, this is the total for the general fund. And then the maintenance operations for, and in corresponding with those as well as other one times. Now, we have options and we talked about them again. Now, if we go back to that idea, the primary idea of a balanced budget, we're balanced. But then there are other options. You can, as I suggested last time, reduce the hundred, the COLA by 1.1% as opposed to bolt 2.2. Again, the 2.2 was arrived at based on the methodology. We can always reduce that. You can always also cover the recurring deficit with the excess reserves, which is what I was sharing earlier. And then last, true up in September. So what I'm actually suggesting is trueing up in September, putting everything in, everything citywide. I can't just hold, just to clarify, I can't just hold one group over another separate. So it wouldn't be fair for our team if we just said, everybody who's in the general fund, sorry, you don't get moving until September, but everybody who's in the water and wastewater fund, you get to move. Or you get the 2.2% or you get the 1.1%. Those wouldn't be fair. And as a result, the team gets to hold off until we get September in front of us. So that was the suggestion that I brought forward last time we met. So just wanted to make sure and go over this chart. Now, I'm not sure this is the chart you had envisioned, Commissioner Halliday, but wanted to make sure to translate what we think we heard and before overthinking it. So thanks, Fisher O'Laughlin, here.
Yeah, Mayor, I do have a question if that's okay. Um, so I, could you walk through and, and actually it, it would be a little helpful to see where in the actual general fund, the packet that we received, where these reside? So I'm specifically wondering about the FY 22 proposed one-time expenditure. So that 2.9 million, can you go through what all is being considered one time?
You bet. I'm also going to turn it over to Commissioner Director Danielson to.
Yes, um, thank you, Commissioner and Mayor. So we went over those one-time expenditures, the 2.9 million in my presentation that I gave to the commission at our first budget work session.
Director Danielson, would you speak up please?
Sorry, um, hopefully you can hear me now.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Had some other issues with people not able to hear me. So we went over those one-time expenditures that made up that 2.9 million dollars. And I'm going to share my screen, if you'll allow me to share my screen. Manager Holoschok or City Clerk Clayburn, I can, I can go ahead and show you that. Okay. Can you, can you see my screen? Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm going to come back to the presentation that I gave. So when we were talking about those one-time expenditures that were made up of using those excess reserves, there is the previous authorization to use the COVID funds for the general fund savings for the ERP new software, 1.5 million dollars. The transfer to the Civic Center is about 90,000 more than it was in the prior year. We're also proposing a transfer to cover debt service of $235,000 to the golf course fund. There were other software conversions in the city clerk and city attorney's office being proposed in about a $61,800. New consulting services for new initiatives in the city manager's office that totaled up to about $165,000. Furniture and equipment for new staff being proposed totaling about $82,000. Some consulting in HR, police, like a work, work study, continued HR services from CMS. Parks for regional parks, parks district consulting and community development consulting, one-time project cost of 140,000. I had proposed some additional training above and beyond what I've, what's been asked in the past for government accounting classes for my staff. Some COVID general fund savings that was approved as a transfer over to the general capital fund for police radios for 125,000. And also an evidence impound yard asphalt installation. And in a difference to, in addition to those capital requests and parks that are in the general capital fund asks that totaled $505,000 that were kind of more above and beyond normal vehicle replacements. And that is how we got to that 1.6 million dollar of not one-time costs using excess reserves from the general fund. Does that answer your question, Commissioner O'Laughlin?
Yeah, it does, although I'll just say I don't know that we're on the same screen you might be on. We're on general. Uh, yep, okay, there it is. Thank you. So I, I just, the one comment I would just make is that I, I'm confused how we are classifying. Are we classifying the golf course as this is a one-time transfer and that is it? We are not, because this is the third fiscal year now that we've transferred from the general fund. I apologize that I missed last Monday's meeting. It sounds like there was some conversation around golf. Is this one time?
Currently, as it is being proposed, is a one-time transfer. Although City Manager Holoschok has also proposed that there are a couple of options with that debt service. One, to continue to have the general fund take on that debt service until the debt is paid off and/or to use excess reserve to pay the debt in total, which that debt service has about a 1.9 million dollar principal balance still outstanding on it. So as it stands now, it's, ask is for a one-time transfer, but the conversation still needs to happen around that policy on how we want to, how the commission wants to handle that, that debt service for communities restroom.
Okay. And then if I'm clear on this, so you are, you are considering the, the remaining portion of the transfer to the Civic Center as ongoing?
No, I'm proposing, yes, excuse me, yes, that, that has been a historic transfer that has happened, although it's still a policy issue on, um, I, I don't, I don't know that there has been a policy around that subsidy in the past, just that each year there has been a subsidy that I've noted that has happened to the Civic Center. And so I think that that policy discussion still needs to happen.
Yep, okay. Yeah, I mean, it's not unlike capital transit, I suppose either. I mean, there are other areas. I think golf course seems different to me because it feels like we're talking about it as one time and then separately talking about it as a, as an ongoing obligation to the general fund. We need to decide. My preference is to pull it out and we have that conversation after we've, we've moved the preliminary budget. That just seems cleaner to me. And I think that, that then that allows us to also have an honest conversation about how to proceed in, in ensuring that the, that the golf course is financially sound, right? I mean, I think we have to have that conversation. We, we sort of passed the buck a year ago. We said, we're going to do this one time. We're going to, we're going to do a general fund transfer one time. We recognize that this is a significant obligation to the general fund. These are taxpayer dollars that we are now transferring to the Gulf Fund. We're going to do it on a one-time basis. That then, you know, a subsequent fiscal year transfer occurred without, I think, the commissions. I certainly was not aware that we made an additional general fund transfer until I got this budget. And this would be the third year. And so I think that that's a, that's a substantive policy discussion that in my preference would be to, to not consider it one time if it's the third year we've done it and, and instead pull it out and have the conversation after the preliminary budget.
Thank you. And I just do want to make one clarification, Commissioner O'Laughlin, is that the $200,000 projected transfer to the Gulf Fund that we have in the budget has not happened yet. That is going to be subject to the commission's approval. We put it in there as a needed transfer in order to make that fund solvent. However, that transfer has not happened as of this time.
Okay, that's helpful clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it okay for me to quit sharing my screen?
Yep, it's okay with us.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Great questions and I think you're, I appreciate the pulling out the golf fund. I think that is exactly a really good, good way of doing that. I think also wanted to give back to the question around the IT budget. Do you have any further questions before I move on? Do you have any further questions on this? This kind of this line out of, of what we're really discussing in this 1.6 million, the options that we have available to us, to you as a policy leaders. And then also, because these are really policy conversations, how do you want to talk about our budget is, it really is, I think, an interesting way of looking at these gaps and then actually trueing up with actuals as has been done in the past and hasn't been a lot. And in recent years, I did go back quite a number of years and there was a tradition as happens in every local government. I hadn't seen it until getting here in a long time, which is not trueing up a final. So I, it's a practice that is a best practice. It is an expectation and it certainly makes auditing better. Although I think Commissioner, Commissioners and Mayor, I think we have an update on the audit as well that might be good to share here as, to share here too, Sheila, if you would.
Yes, thank you, City Manager Holoschok. We did just get a preliminary draft audit opinion, both on our single audit and our financial audit. And I was very excited that there were no findings and that they felt that the financial statements are presented fairly. So we are wrapping up some final adjustments with them and getting that, that second draft annual report to them so that they can wrap up their opinion and we can schedule an exit interview. So that was really good news that we got.
Thank you.
And I really want to thank our city controller, Barbara Walsh and accountant Sarah McConnell for all their efforts on that report as well. It was very complicated and they've worked very diligently to try to get us to this point. So thank you.
Please extend our sincere gratitude to them.
Yeoman's work, they did. Okay.
So Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes. Go ahead, Commissioner.
We're looking at here, so on the contingent expenditures pending actual versus projected revenue piece, you know, those are all included in our current draft budget. And they, they seem to be the biggest, for me, hurdle for getting to a structurally sound budget because they're the things that we're going to be looking at year over year over year into the future rather than spend downs of one-time cash. And two things, one, it, I really would like to see sort of a specific breakdown of those. And if I've missed it, I, I apologize. Because that, those are the pieces that we really need to have the specific policy discussions about. We can still talk about the one times, but these are the ones that are going to have to be lived with when you're talking about expenditures over revenue into the future. And the reason that, you know, these specifically talking about backing out parts of the budget and then rebuilding back in once we have a preliminary in places. Right now, the way we're looking at this is all or partial or potentially nothing. And there are, there are myriad pieces here. There's myriad FTEs proposed, there's myriad reclassifications, there's 688, well, 684,000 dollars in new recurring M and O. You know, we shouldn't be having those discussions based on those numbers alone. We need to be having them based on individual categories, positions, how it aligns with the commission's strategic goals, the managers' proposed goals, and then ultimately structural soundness year over year going forward. So, you know, I, I think we should be pulling all of that out at this point and adding back in with that focus towards are we fiscally solvent, are we, do we have a Do we have a structurally sound budget? Rather than just saying, well, maybe we'll have some of these, maybe we'll slow down some of these. Do we want some of these? Do we not want some of these? Are there others we want to talk about? Or is this the best use of our year-over-year money? We haven't had that discussion. I'd like to see that list. I think I think the way to have that discussion is to pull all of this out and start from scratch adding back in.
Thank you, Commissioner. Manager Holoshock.
Okay, then we also have the IT conversation. So the interesting part of the question, the the request you have Commissioner Holliday is the way in which internal services are charged. As an internal service, IT is charged to all of us. We share IT with the county and as a result, the county who actually holds those positions as their staff. And we are charged as a service provider. Those costs play out in an internal service charge. Same thing happens with our facilities. So if you look at our facilities budget, you'll see there is a an increase there. That increase is then charged to all of the departments that receive services through facilities. So what you'll see are increases that also include, to your point around M and O, the yellow fields. Those do include internal service requests as well as internal service charges from the fleet in IT. So to go to your question, the specific question around the increase in IT. The increase in IT reflects the service response that I have shared with the IT team, which is that we are not receiving the service that we need as a city. And that we would be spending the next year evaluating and looking at whether or not the city is actually receiving the value for the service that we're we're paying into. And what they have shared to me is that they cannot provide the service unless they have a position which was actually removed from the budget added back in. So when they hired the current IT director, they got rid of a business manager position and what you see is an increase based on returning the budget manager position or the business manager position, excuse me, to the budget. So that's the increase you see. You also see increased relative charges to their own 2% across the board that the county has built into their own operations as well. So those are the two primary source of the increase to the city's IT.
Madam, Manager Holoshock. Why was that business manager removed? The position rather?
My understanding is that it was removed and two additional positions were added. One was a web designer and the additional was a security officer.
Security officer. Thank you, Commissioner Dean.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner.
Yeah, can maybe for the manager, can you just extrapolate a little bit on the services that you don't see? Are are that we are receiving from my IT right now?
You got the couple of things. They are doing a really good job of trying to respond to my inquiries on workload. First, I really, I want to point out to the conversation, this conversation about service level isn't about the people. I really, I I know we have team members on and it's it's not around the people. It's it's actually around the work that's being done. Just to make sure, but the work that's being done. I don't believe is to the benefit of the city. In many places, I see the largest volume of the work that's being done burdened onto the county side. And I've asked, and they've done a great job of doing this for me. Asked them to break out the types of projects. Previously, the reports that we've received are based on a total count of work as opposed to type of work. So project work, I've asked for them to define small, medium and large projects. And then I've also defined and and then I'm also asking them to provide to me what that actually looks like. So it it becomes duly and difficult to to work. And Roger's been a really great partner, just to to clarify. He's also very interested in understanding what it's like for us, but moving into into this role. There is a an MOU, an interagency agreement between the city and the county that really hasn't been followed for a number of years. And as a result of that, the method of management is a little different than we than we should have within a director team for us. The accountability is different. The details on what's been shared to us is different. And again, it's not about the people. It's it's been this way for a long time. And it's, I believe, just translated over time into something that now we cannot actually get our hands around. So my ask is to, sorry.
No, I just wanted to say, so why don't we just follow what we said we would do? Why aren't we following the agreement?
Well, I I'm the person who asked them to do that and and we're getting there. That's exactly where we're starting from. The unfortunate thing is that you know, the structure was, it's really interesting. You know, Mayor, it's really hard to hold someone accountable in a personnel system they're not accountable in.
Right.
You know, it it that's how it plays out for us. So it's it's a service provider and it it makes it difficult. They, again, the people work hard at trying to come at the services we need. It just doesn't play out in the volume of work they can actually do for us. And frankly, the the agreement that was made was so long ago, we really haven't assessed where we're going. I'll I'll tell you, anytime we add something new, our staff have to do it. The app is managed by our transportation team. Be Heard is managed by our our public information team. Any added service is added to our team as a result of our team having to step in to manage it. So that that doesn't lend itself to a functioning IT system where what what I would believe supports the entirety of our operation. Definitely, definitely providing base operation. We have our computers on. They are managing the security. Our website is up. The systems we have in place are up. That does not mean we're doing anything proactive for the city. So there's a long answer.
Yeah, so I I I understood that so project work, we're looking for greater breakdown. It sounds like new services that we choose to add are disproportionately maybe falling on city departments. Are there other things that that we are looking at that are we don't know that we're getting our dollars worth, other deficiencies?
Yeah, the strategic outcome of where we're going. And what the IT team could be doing to support that longer view of what the city needs. They are burdened with having to address both sides. And the county and the city have two different places we're coming from on our technology side. It's very difficult for them to manage both. The other is on the the I'm just I'll grab the summary as we provided it during the the conversation with the team.
Well, and maybe while you're grabbing that, are we, so when we're talking about gathering that information, getting metrics over the next year, is that an internally facing activity or are we you know, contracting with someone or looking externally to understand what either this shared relationship can look like to better benefit the city and in what you're explaining or areas where the city needs to figure out something different? Who's who's doing that? And how are we evaluating all of that over the next year?
It's a really good question. Commissioner, did the I have the same aversion to studies. And, you know, we have had a study. We had a study of the IT system done. And they have been making improvements based on what that study, that assessment, it's an assessment list of of base operations within the IT system. So for me, I was intending as a project of mine to spend the time in evaluating what would I want from a from one of my teams on the IT side and also working with the IT team? I had not planned in an external consultant coming in and evaluating the services that we could be getting. And instead, really getting down to the the brass tacks of the dollars that we're paying and the services we're providing. Were provided. So additional, so some of the key areas, just to get back to the point of what we've been evaluating, what I've been evaluating is customer service, finances, management of the interactions across the depart across the teams and across the departments. Service level analysis, including those tasks and the the service levels within each of those tasks, our staffing, the use of those staff, and then last, whether or not we're actually looking into the future of what Helena needs. So that that is the the plan for next year. I do want to investigate a further a further conversation by way of where we could be going as a city with the IT team and with the county to county understands the position that we're in and understands my my position of us not getting more than just base service and and is that really for the extremely large, what I believe, large amount of dollars enough for for Helena?
Madam Holoshock. Are we getting our money's worth?
I don't have enough information to say that either way, but I would tell you that I know that we are paying more and more each year and we're not getting more and more service. We're maintaining our base services. I think with everything that you're being offered within our operating budgets, you're getting more service. So when we're talking about staff within each of the positions and will definitely be providing each of those positions and that more detailed analysis of of what their purpose is. Those are intended to support the strategies and they're they're intended to support that longer term view. When 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 Director Danielson asks for an IT, an IT improvement, she's the one asking for it. She's the one who's completing the RFP. She's the one having to find the consultant. Not our IT team. That is not what I would expect from our IT team. I would expect our IT team to run the RFP, identify the method of integration. We have to do that. That's why the project, as we've suggested, be funded out of the the care savings, the general fund savings from this year. That's why it's delayed. It's because Sheila has to do it. We don't have someone in IT who's going to go out and fix it. And and as a matter of fact, we didn't, we didn't know about, we didn't get that that reach from them. So I would just say that it's really they are trying their best and they're doing their best as a team. I think it's really difficult for them to balance two organizations with two different priorities and try to move forward at the same time. So this was my compromise with the, yeah, this was my compromise. Do I think in the bottom line? Are we getting our money's worth? No, I believe that's not what we use our money. We're pretty frugal, I have to say. And how we look at our operations, we try and and to have our transportation team manage the app to improve services. We we are constantly looking for improvements and and the continuation of of improvements overall is really what I'm hoping the team will see as the expectation in the long run. It's not just a, this is our newest improvement and we're done. We are constantly improving. We don't just.
So Madam Holoshock, what's the this event, what are the disadvantages in going on our own?
Oh, right now, if we were to just cut loose right now, well, we would have a loss of exit strategy. I really don't.
I didn't mean right now, just, you know, we can, we can slowly move on, but I mean.
Yeah.
What were the disadvantages?
At this point, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm I'm at the place of, I'm not sure why we wouldn't actually investigate this exit strategy more thoroughly. And I've I've communicated that as well to the IT team and to to my counterpart.
Okay. Thank you.
So Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Please, go ahead, Commissioner.
So going back to the the slide that's still on our sheet. Maybe I'll ask my question in another way. Is there a place other than going through the current budget, looking through each individual general fund, noting the new FTE that that fund is proposing? Looking at new potential expenditures within those funds that we can see a list of at a minimum what breaks down to that 499,000 number? And is there a place similarly with the $684,000 number that is just a a simple cheat sheet that the commission or anyone sort of following along at home could see? You know, because that's that's 1.1 plus million dollars, right? And I've just you know, those are those are policy items to talk about. And so where do we see those?
So, oh, sorry, go ahead, Sheila.
I I excuse me, this is Sheila Danielson, Finance Director. Yes, we did. I did formulate a list of that staff that make up that new new staffing requests and and where where they were at and sent that to Manager Holoshock and and she may bring that up at this point. I also want to just reiterate what Manager Holoshock indicated about the this budget does not propose any new fee increases, charges for service increases and and cost recovery increases from the prior year. It has been the history's practice to base their general fund cost recovery allocations on projected budget expenditures. I did not do that intentionally for this budget because I have questions on not necessarily the dollar amount that's being allocated from the general fund, but how that's being allocated to the other funds. And there are other funds that I believe that may be getting more than their share of allocated costs. So our cost recovery at this point is based on fiscal 20 actuals. If I had based it on our projections, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. So I just wanted to clarify that as well.
Can I, can I ask actually a quick question on that?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So when when you say contin the yellow contingent cost recovery allocation, is that ex is that because up at the top, it's described as a contingent expenditure? Is that an expenditure? Or is that revenue coming into the general fund from cost recovery?
Thank you, Commissioner Loughlin. That is, it is both revenue coming into the general fund and it's an expenditure going out to other funds.
Okay. So so it's the allocation of, say, the city manager's office across all, but it's also the city engineers time for community development or whatever.
Correct.
Okay, got it. So so what you're saying here, what can you describe this box again? Then what is what is this cost recovery allocation, the 684,000 represent compared to what's already reflected in the budget?
Do you want me to answer that, Commissioner or Manager Holoshock?
For either one of us. Well, I'm sorry if I missed that. I think I might have missed in that clarity. What we have not done with the budget, and I think we shared this when we sat down with you, Commissioner Loughlin, was that we are not sure that this cost recovery model that we have in place here for these positions that are actually citywide positions are, is actually accurate. So the hard part and, and of all of, all of the work we're finding is that the methodology is either not repeatable or is, is, needs further study. So we're doing our best to, to try and offer options so that we can spend next year really going after these things. But if we were to go after a greater revision to all of those, this 684,000 would hit all of the other fees based and rate-based funds and reduce this overage by 684,000. Is that accurately stated, Sheila? Did I make it as clear as?
Yes, thank you, Manager Hallashock. Also, I mean, I, I will indicate that I can, I have prepared a list that indicates costs that are, that have increased. I did go through line item by line, I'm in this budget and, and review increases over prior year asks that are buried in those maintenance and operating costs. An example is primary election costs. They weren't budgeted last year, but they're budgeted almost $64,000 in fiscal '22 because we anticipate having that particular cost for a primary election, if it, if it need, if it needs to happen in fiscal '22. That's, that, that, it could be seen as two things. It could be seen as a, a recurring maintenance cost because we've had to do it in the past, but we haven't had to budget in the past for a couple of years, but we're budgeting for it in the next fiscal year. A couple other, you know, examples are new technology replacements. We could certainly stay with current technology and, um, you know, manually do things and, and make those patches, but there have been some requests for new technology upgrades that have, I, I would not consider them one-time costs because they do have ongoing maintenance fees associated with them. Example, you know, I have also seen an increase in training and travel costs across the board. So those are, those are ongoing maintenance costs, but they're increases from prior year. So I do have that list and I can formulate that for you, the commission and, and send that out.
Yeah, that would be super helpful. Um, I guess I'll just, I mean, I'll just kind of take a step back and just say, I, I really think we should, our goal should be structural balance with the preliminary budget. Now again, if we ultimately want to add back in the COLA and I, I think it's probably worth some more discussion about the new staff request. I mean, we got kind of the list, but substantively, do we need to have a conversation about where staffing levels sit in each of the departments? You know, I'd be comfortable with considering adding those back in before we pass the final budget. I mean, we definitely have done in the past where we have approved the COLA contingent upon, you know, truing up actual revenue that, that comes in, um, you know, in August or September. I, I know from like a procedural standpoint, that's often been helpful for us to include in the final budget rather than go back after we've enacted the budget and amend it. I, I just think if we could start with a preliminary budget that is structurally balanced, it's still not going to necessarily show that, that revenue. It's going to probably show that, that expenditures exceed revenue, but I think that there's a justification for the one-time only expenditures. But I would say if we could, if we could strive for structural balance, I think this is a good approach to back these, back these items in kind of the green and then the, if, if the adjustment can be made to factor in the yellow into the preliminary budget. I mean, I guess that's a question. Can that be done?
Thank you.
Madam Hallshock?
Thank you. We're both, we're both thinking over how much, um, how timing we've got. I don't, I, I actually would have to ask Sheila if that's even reasonable based on what we know of these methodologies that we're looking at.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question while they're thinking?
Yeah, sure.
So, um, this might keep on their thinking. I doubt it, but generally is, is the approach that the manager is taking, and this I guess would be for the manager, but the manager is take, is, has an understanding that we, we achieve balance this year. And we achieve structural balance next year. Do I, am I misunderstanding that?
No. That is all, those are all correct.
And then, so the, the impression that I got from Commissioner Loughlin's most recent question or quest was that, and, and so this would be for Commissioner Loughlin, you're hoping for a structural balance this year. Is that accurate?
Mayor and Commissioner Logan, I, so structural balance is ongoing, right? So back to your, back, back to the city manager's statement of reaching structural balance in, I think what you're saying is you, you believe you're projecting structural balance in FY '23. I guess I'd like to see that because it's hard for me to understand how by adding a half a million dollars in new staff, 300,000 in ongoing cost of living adjustments with the current revenue levels that we're projecting, what is changing, right, into FY '23? Those things grow over time, right? Is revenue increasing in FY '23 that would reach structural balance? Because I guess I, I'd need to know a little bit more about the statement that, that we, that we think there's structural balance in, in '23.
So, okay, so we'll go back to the, the initial statement, which is this, this big picture of the state budget says if you are balanced, expenditures versus revenues, you are balanced. Now, the structural balance is this conversation of appropriate allocations, appropriate assessments, appro, excuse me, not assessments, appropriate rates and appropriate charges for fees. Those we had put on hold until we could get better study on how those rates and how those fees are put together. For example, in this budget, we are requesting funding to complete a rate study for the water and sewer systems. That is based on the intention of a longer view than just year-to-year capital planning. Same thing with our fees. As it relates to our operations, we are intending to look more into the future than we have as opposed to year-to-year. Those, so how can we get to a stronger structural balance? It is in the study and ex, and execution of better methodology that's repeatable. That's where we have the problem in this yellow box. We do not have the methodology that we, we, that we agree with at this point on how those are charged. Actually, we think they're charged less than they should be. Now, whether or not other departments would like that is something different, but that is, that's what we believe. And that, when you, when we, when we assess those, it changes the values in those departments. So whether or not we can get a preliminary budget to you in January, at the beginning of January, that accurately reflects the methodology, I don't, I don't believe that's realistic. So whether or not in FY '23, we get into a full structural balance assumes, as you pointed out, had, uh, Commissioner Loughlin, that we are constantly growing in our revenue. What I shared last time is that our revenue is more stable than other local governments that are so really dependent upon sales tax and other unstable revenue sources. So Helena is growing. We are, property tax is increasing. There are increases in those items that are based for general funds. So I think we have a better likelihood to say that I'm 100% confident. I think, I think I can be because now I understand what we're actually being asked to do. We didn't have this level of clarity when I came to the table. And I think Sheila and I in a really quick clip in eight months, we're getting closer to understanding the distinctions. So that isn't 100%. I can't give you 100% yes. We're always going to be structurally balanced. We'll have the structure in place to get to that structural balance.
Thank you, Madam Hallshock. Commissioner Logan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, so as I look at the presentation that, that we got last week from, from Director Danielson and the manager, um, and I think it's been reflected in, in later, you know, meeting in between now and then, uh, was, was you had, you know, you've obviously, since, since both of you came on, you've been really trying to understand where the city of Helena's budget is and, and where it needs to go. And, and so, you know, from my perspective, you dug into it way the heck more than I have. Clearly. And, and so there's a recommendation to get to a general fund structural balance. And I'm just looking at the slide from the meeting from last Wednesday and I'm, and it talks of a big piece of that is begin resiliency work, where its staff will prepare cost recovery and rate analysis for internal and external charges. And staff will do this and staff will do that and staff will do the other thing. And, and I guess I am really comfortable with that approach. I think, I think there is, and then at the end of it, you present to us a structural balanced budget for FY 2023. I think I, I agree with the manager. I think it's going to take a lot, a lot of work and, uh, staff's going to be busy addressing all of these areas to come to a structurally balanced budget. And I'm comfortable with that. And I, I guess I just want to, rather than us commission trying to sort of do that, I'd almost feel like we'd be undoing the work that, that staff has done up to this point and then potentially could be doing in the upcoming year. So I'm, I'm really comfortable with the approach that the manager and the staff have proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, so one thing that I'm, and Manager Hallashock, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, having gone through these last three sessions, really kind of the, I guess, thesis of this budget is to be more proactive rather than reactive. So we have, you know, long-term stability and we're not necessarily having a reactionary budget, but really one that is, um, you know, multi-multi-year and it's in being built. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, I believe, yeah, they, yes, it's a good summation of, it's just, it's a lot, it's a level of effort that we, we were committed to putting in, to setting a really good standard on budget management based on general government practices. And then going to the next space of making a strong budget will come in the next several years, but we're going to start out as fast as we can and getting this righted.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. And that's, um, I'm, I'm comfortable with that direction and I think I, I like that Commissioner Logan mentioned that resiliency piece again that really spoke to me when you first presented, but, um, I do think that long-term stability is obviously important.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Loughlin. I apologize.
No, that's okay. Um, so I, so I definitely understand the, the need to, to review the cost recovery allocation methodology and sort of get a sense of whether or not there are things that need to be updated. I also recognize that, um, that the commission may want to consider adjustments to assessments, increasing assessments, right, on Helena City taxpayers. I think that's what you're saying is going to, is going to be necessary. I will just say, and, and you alluded to this at the end, City Manager, but those type of things aren't going to necessarily balance the general fund, right? So for the most part, those are the enterprise funds. Now, I understand they tie back depending on the cost recovery. But, you know, if you look at, I'm looking at page 94 of our administrative packet, which is, I think, page 90 of the, of, of the budget, preliminary budget that we received. So the general fund. And I mean, if you look at our total revenues for the last several years, I mean, they're fairly steady, right? They're not dipping. Um, I, I think we did fairly well projected for FY '21. But it's not, this isn't, it, I, I would not characterize this as, as we're seeing significant growth in revenue to the general fund. We are proposing pretty significant increased expenditures to the general fund. So I just, I, I just think that's something to be aware of. And I think that I understand that there's going to be adjustments to what the packet that we received. But if you look at what we adopted in FY '21 as a budget, we also were not, we were not necessarily structurally balanced, right? Um, and we had these conversations as a commission last year. I think there was recognition that some additional proposals for ongoing expenditures needed to be evaluated again. Um, and if you look, we were about a half a million dollars out of structural balance. We ultimately are projected to come in at about a half a million in the, in the black. What, what is being proposed this year is well beyond what we've seen in other budgets. Merely $5 million structural imbalance. So that is significant to me. And I think, and I understand that some of that is one time. I understand and I hope that we're going to have a conversation about the federal dollars that are coming in. How much of that is already being sort of, uh, allocated as expenditures in this budget? Um, and, and how those funds are going to be used? But that's a pretty significant departure from, from how we've balanced our budget in the past. And I, I'd like to see sort of the long-term consequences, right? I mean, that, that's a pretty significant depletion of our ending cash balance. And I think that future commissions may be in a difficult place. So.
Totally agree.
So I, I just, I, I would like to see, I, the term resiliency, I'd like to know what that means. I, I would like, I'd like to see sort of what are your general fund revenue projections into FY '23 that shows that there's structural balance? Um, and then I think we've, we've got to have a conversation about what the federal funds, how those are being reflected in the budget on the expenditure side.
Great questions. Commissioner Loughlin, we are proposing the first reserve policy that has a, that, that is going to be set for the city. The reserve policy and the setting of that policy has a significant impact on this conversation. I feel like though what has been missing, Commissioner Loughlin, is the conversations and the presentations that you have not heard leading up to tonight. Uh, the first was this conversation around the use of the reserve. And, uh, policy setting a reserve policy because the reserve is actually part of the, where you start from the next year, to your point. It is a different method than we are talking about in the past. In the past, you didn't go back and, and reserve, go back and review the actual revenue because the actual in FY 2019 was $850,000 that was not brought into and refreshed into the. that was not brought into and refreshed into the actual FY twenty nineteen budget. Instead, what happens is that dumps into the end of year balance that is then started with in the next year. And you can see it shows on the budgeted revenue for FY twenty-two. Then the same thing occurs as you go into the next budget. You now are seeing this budgeted revenue and you're not actually coming back to reflect the revenue. Now, I want to also point out the cost of living increase conversation really gets to one of the, the greater issues that we have in Helena. And, and according to the Montana Regional Montana Labor Statistics Team, Helena has increased by six point eight percent from nineteen, twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen in its cost of homes and twenty, and ten point two five percent from nineteen to twenty. Those actually do result in increases and total dollars into the revenue because they're based on property tax. That's where the property tax is, the, the ratio of the property tax comes from.
But, but Mayor and, um, City Manager, don't we just adjust our mills though? I mean, you ha, you, you take out newly taxable value, but, I mean, our millage can only grow at a half of a rate of, of inflation, pulling out new taxable value. So the value of property is, is, help me understand how that's related to that though.
So the, so that, that is a very good question. Uh, the best question that we have, and that's why we keep coming back to this, this, uh, what is the, the total revenue conversation? Because this return is something that we have not seen and not reflected on. So that's why this contingent, we have to have a contingent built into any adoption of beyond base operations from today. We have to know what's actual revenue. To your point, what is the distinction between our property value increase and the actual amount of mills returned to us? That is a question that I'm hoping to get a better feel on this year. And I know that, um, we have serious questions around the assessments and how those are returned to us as well. Those are both portions of this conversation that we've, we've really struggled to get our hands on as well. Finance Director Danielson, I'm not sure if you want to offer up anymore on the mills conversation and how that plays out on the property values, as well as any of the other values of the, the dollars that return to, to the city.
Um, thank you, Manager. Um, I, I will say that, you know, I have delved into a lot of the assessments and the, the revenue calculations for the city. And that is one of the reasons that, I chose to change the cost allocation recovery for fiscal twenty-two because I wasn't comfortable with how some of those calculations were being, parceled out to the other funds. I've looked at, um, you know, and, and, you know, normally when you do something like that, you, you know, you can, you can have a method and a methodology and it's been used for years. And, um, you know, I, I've talked to the previous finance director and, um, about some of that. And, you know, he, his, his response is, you know, it, it's a good methodology. It just hadn't been updated in a lot of time because he had lack of, lack of staff, lack of time to really delve into these assessment issues. When I looked into, for example, the street lighting assessments and how that calculation was happened, the math wasn't working. And so I had to ask questions about, you know, why, why the method was used the way it was. And, um, same with the property tax, um, calculations. It's, it's, it's a work in progress right now. And, um, I, I don't, I don't discount the work that any finance director has done for the city. I know that they, you know, had their methodologies. A lot of that was not written down. And I'm just trying to wrap my head around it and understand it so that I can propose something that makes sense to not only me, but to the manager and to the commission.
So I, I guess I, I have a question then about, you know, we have this one-time-only money that we're, we're spending down, right? And that, that results in this sort of four point five million dollar sticker shock. But then we have this one point six million number, the red number on our, our sheet that was sent out prior to this meeting that was just up on the screen. And maybe in the, the simplest private consumer standpoint, if we started with zero dollars in the bank today, right, we had no reserves, we had nothing, we just have a big old zero. We get all of our revenue in and then we make all our expenditures. Am I correct in understanding that we would have a negative one point six million dollar situation at the end of the year based on that number and the preliminary budget projections?
No, I don't believe so because you also, you start with your number, but you don't stop earning money. Those, those monies come in, some people don't pay you, some people do. Until you get to the end of the year and then two year, two months later, you actually know how much you have. What I'm saying to you is that two months after is when you actually know how much you really get to spend. So yes, you start with your beginning balance, you spend it down, then you come to the end. Oh, these are new funds. That's where we're talking about. These are the cash value coming in at the end of the year. These are revenues beyond budget that we need to either move to the fiscal year where, in which it is actually brought in or turn it into the new mon, that new number that next year. That new number next year, that's a decision point. That's not been the practice as a general practice.
So, um, I, I, I understand all of that. And actually, it, it has been a practice, but normally we just saw that number at the beginning of budget time usually reflected in a projected. Um, you know, the numbers came in, somebody changed the budget, but the commission never talked about it. But it happened the whole time that I was on the commission, there would be new numbers at the end. This is what I'm going, going back to though. I appreciate that there's a, a mystery number in essence. At the end of the year, it looks like it's anywhere between three hundred and six hundred thousand dollars each year that we normally see in new growth. But I, I just want to understand, going back to the previous slide, and, um, I don't know if we want to put it back up or if we've taken it down, um, for good tonight. But wh- what I see on that slide is something that says we're getting approximately twenty-three five, I believe that number was in, twenty-three seven. And we're gonna have twenty-five three out. Am I, am I, yep, right? And am I understanding correctly that based on what we are projecting today, right, we have a, a net in the red of one point six three six million projected? I understand that there is other money out there. I get that. We, we've talked about it ad nauseam. But we put a budget in place for a reason, right? And we have historically budgeted conservatively in Helena. Um, and, and probably to, to our betterment in certain cases and our detriment in other cases. But based on these revenue projections, we'd be showing a loss of, if everything held steady, no new money. The city would owe one point six approximately million dollars in obligations at the end of fiscal twenty-two, according to these numbers. Is, am I, am I understanding that wrong? And even if we give credit for let's say six hundred thousand dollars in growth, we'd still be showing a projected one million dollar deficit at the end of FY twenty-two. Is, is that correct?
It depends on the point of view you employ. Is it balanced or structurally balanced? Balanced? No. Structurally balanced? Yes. Now, structurally balanced assumes that all of the allocations, all of the rates and all of the, uh, staff are all in place. So you assume a hundred percent of expansion, expense and a hundred percent of revenue. I don't know if you want to add more to that.
I mean, so like, so then I just, I just want to be clear then. We may be projecting a one point six, but we're just assuming that because of other assumptions that we're not building into the budget, it will get better, is?
Absolutely.
Okay, but.
And, um, this is, Sheila, I, I will add to that. I mean, a, a, as Rachel noted is that we're projecting this budget to have zero vacancies. We are budgeting staff at one hundred percent filled and we know that we have not built in any kind of vacancy rate. We can do that. And, and that would definitely help that number because historically the, the city has vacancies that, that account for that, um, to build into that. But this balance, this budget is projected at one hundred percent staffing, one hundred percent, uh, expenditure rate. And, and typically that is not the case.
On that question, Director Danielson, what would you recommend for a vacancy rate? And, and would you do it across all departments then?
I'd have to do, um, a little bit further analysis, but one of the primary departments that, that I see that has, ongoing vacancies is the police department. And, um, you know, their benefits and their, their staff, I mean, when you look at that, you're, you're looking at, I, I like to think of staff as a hundred thousand dollars. One person is a hundred thousand dollars. Um, it's a nice round number and it, and, and the police typically have several vacancies a year. Um, that can range, you know, anywhere between, um, you know, five to, to more. That's five hundred thousand dollars in vacancies right there, um, for, for police. That does not, I have a, you know, we have vacancies in general admin as well. Um, I can't, right now, I can't fill apparel specialists. I have not had any qualified, um, candidates. I, I can't find a procurement officer. We have vacancies that are continual in the, in the parks department, parks maintenance department. That's part of the general fund. You know, I think that sometimes, you know, in this budget, when I've looked at it, um, there are over projections for, for travel and training that likely, I would, I would think that not all of it's going to happen. So, um, do I think that we're going to end the year at one point six million dollars in the red? No, I don't.
So an attrition value, Commissioner Lofflin? Just to go back to the, pointing out a particular department, when you're talking about a general fund savings across, an attrition value assumes, having created an attrition value, it is, it is not something that is one time, you can assess in one year. And certainly it's not something that you can base off of dollars and information, finance information that comes from hand-entered information. We have this structure, this actual infrastructure problem, which goes back to our IT conversation. We have a structural problem about our inability to get out of our finance system's flat information so we can actually analyze it. We have to hand-enter all of these things in order to get to true value. So again, coming back to, I would love to see an attrition value. That is, that is the essence of good, resilient, long-term budgeting where you're actually seeing beyond fiscal stability, which is what I've been talking about. I already shared to you all the resiliency conversation, which was a resilient community as one that cannot only meet the expectations of stability that I'm, I've shared to all of you by way of policies and also by way of, of attrition value and, and other structurally important pieces. Those pieces have to be in place. I don't mind and absolutely will come back to giving you what a resilient budget would look like. A resilient, strong budget can weather a significant loss. Without a reserve policy, which is what we've actually put forward, you are not resilient in, in Helena. We are not resilient in Helena. We are assuming that we have all the money should there be an, an emergency. That's resiliency. What is it that we can do to be strong and weather a significant loss? I still don't believe we've gotten at your answer and I'll come back to it for you on the, um, property values and how we would come at this, um, larger conversation of how money gets back to the city and how, what really results in growth in the general fund? I would, I'm very, very interested in more study on that myself, frankly. We just have not gotten there.
Yeah, I'd be curious, um, the slide that you showed, was that just general fund, the, with the bar graphs?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it would be helpful, you, because we, we get all these documents, right? In advance, hundreds of pages. And then, and then during these presentations, we use entirely different documents and, and numbers. And it's really hard to go back, to tie back to, to the doc, to the documents here. I mean, I, I'm, you know, when I look at our, when I look at our general fund revenue, like, I'm just not, I'm just trying to make, get a sense of how those numbers on that slide tie back to this.
Oh, so Sheila put those together today with our team. She can do those math, that math with you. I think she already actually has this spreadsheet probably in her background. So I'll stop sharing. You can share if you'd like. But they're all off of the page. They're all, um, there are the, um, so the staffing, you can see, and they're broken out. We can go through the actual chart themselves across in that summary sheet. So it's really kind of up to you, Sheila, how you'd like to communicate it. But they're all based off the data within this document. So we're, we're trying to accommodate the asks in these presentations, not so much, um, that further draw-in for the line item as you're asking. So go for it, Sheila.
I'm not, um, I'm not, I, I need some more clarity on what, what you want to look at. Sorry.
She is wanting to know where these numbers came from. She is saying that she does not, so like this twenty-five, five, this twenty-five, three, seven, six, five, six, nine. If you were to go to page, I think it's ninety-four of three hundred and eighty-three, there's the summary sheet for the general fund.
Yes.
Where is that twenty-five, three, seven, six number coming from?
Oh, for, um, just, just for, can you bring up your worksheet one more time?
Oh, I thought I had it on. I'm sorry.
Sorry. So where, where are you talking about? So if you, there's the twenty-three point seven million. That is, that is what our recurring, um, fund is. If you look at the, the proposed recurring expenditures, all I've done is backed out those one time to come up, to come up with the twenty-five, um, point three. I just backed out the one-time expenditure. So currently in the, in the, in the document that you have, we have twenty-eight point, point three million dollars. If I back out those, those one-time expenditures, that's where the twenty-five point three million comes from. It's just.
Yeah, I, sorry, I, I, I didn't, I knew where those one, I was just talking about the bar chart. But if they're coming from this, that's, I, we just don't have in here what was adopted and then what was final. But I think,
Oh, you're talking about the revenue. I'm sorry. Yes. No, that was a math calculation. So,
Okay.
I can, I can actually, um, if you like, I can, I can share that with you. Right now, I do, I do have that, that calculation. Um, so I will, I will share my screen. Can you see my screen now? That shows differences between budget and actual revenues?
Yep.
Okay. So if you look at, at, uh, this is where her bar chart came from. So we had, we had our budgeted revenue of twenty-one point two million, but it actually came in at twenty-two point one million. That's the delta of eight hundred and fifty thousand. Same, uh, concept in, um, fiscal twenty, the delta of six hundred and sixty-four. And then you budgeted, we, you adopted twenty-three point two million in revenue in the general fund for fiscal twenty-one, but I'm projecting it to be at about twenty-three point eight million. That's a delta of almost six hundred. That's a delta of almost $600,000. And so that is, um, that is, that is how that calculation, it was just, I, I pulled up, I pulled up old budget documents and compared it to what we had in actual, and that's how manager Hall of Shock came up with that bar chart graph.
Okay.
And maybe just, just a question on looking at that. Did you take a look at what the initial commission preliminary budget adoption for expenditures over revenues was in those budgets to, to look at those gaps? I've, I've gone back and I've looked at 16, 17 and 18 at least. I, I never saw us adopt a, you know, preliminary, right, expenditures over revenues of larger than approximately half a million dollars in that out the gate budget. I, I think we might've been at 850 to start last year, if I recall correctly. I think 2014, which I remember the manager sat us all down and said, we are, we are in dire straits this year. You know, we're projecting a $500,000 deficit in the general fund to open up this budget process. I'm just curious because you know, those, those numbers are always there. We almost always start this process anywhere from 300,000 to 500,000 dollars in the hole. Um, and they show up on that sheet and every year that we do that. And then at the end of it, we show us a right, a revenues over expenditures. This year, we're starting that number at 1.6. And that's why I'm trying to understand, um, you know, the, the difference and how that lends itself ultimately to whether we want to call it resiliency, sustainability or structural balance. Um, I mean, I, I won't be here, right, in a year or two to look at it. I'll, I'll be a taxpayer and I'll be watching and curious to see what you all do with rates and assessments to, to structurally balance things out because that's what we're talking about on, on my personal property. But I, I just, I don't recall a budget where we started with a, you know, parenthetical 1.6 million historically. And I'm just, that's, that's sort of where I'm, I'm confused about here and what, what I'm trying to get at it in, how are we, how are we getting past that? And how does that build towards resiliency and structure next year?
So budget, there's, uh, when I talked last week about managing a budget versus doing just the budget. So managing a budget is really what I'm asking, which is a distinction of just creating a budget. When you manage a budget, you're doing, you're telling the story of the things that are needed in order to achieve that movement forward. As opposed to, um, sharing what we need to do to put into writing how we can be budgeted and balanced. There are, there's a distinction. So the first is what is it that the team is telling me that you need to know in order to be paid appropriately? Adjust their pay to reflect what's going on in the community. Those are obligations that I have as the city manager to give you. Then there's a second part of budgeting, which is what the finance team does. The finance team goes after the budget itself. This is how you create the budget so that it shows the, all of the potential options. And then on the policy side, you reflect on my management conversation, what Sheila, our finance director is sharing to us. And we get to the, the nuggets of what it is you're after. So I think Commissioner Loughlin's point around pulling golf out is a, that golf debt out is a really good example of management versus budgeting because when you're managing that debt, you don't just apply an actual return every year, which is, is really what you're getting every year when you're only looking at it from a budgeting point of view. So that's the distinction. Now, why is it that I'm sharing to you the 1.6 million? I didn't have to. I could have just said, hey, we are going to totally cut everything out and we are not moving forward and we would be completely structurally balanced. But you would not know all of the things that the team believes needs to happen in order to bring those positions that are out of whack back into alignment. What cost of living increases are needed? And then last, what positions are needed to move forward some of the work that the community needs and wants. So um, that's the distinction I think that you're seeing in this budget this year that you haven't seen before.
Do we know or could we get for a future discussion, the, the average annual vacancy savings? Right? Not full staffing that we see in any given budget year?
We don't have an accounting system that tracks positions in that way.
Do we have, you know, going back to Commissioner Loughlin's questions, do we have assumptions over the next year? 80% bill?
No.
85% fill?
No.
Okay. But we're budgeting in an anticipated savings of some amount, but we don't know what that amount will be.
We are not budgeting in savings at all.
Okay.
Well, we kind of assume that there will be though, in order to reach structural balance.
Not really. No, we've been only talking about structural balance by reducing those three items that bring us up to that 1.6 million.
Okay. So I guess, I guess maybe we are on the same page. If we're going to pull those out of the preliminary budget, then we reach structural balance and then we can have the conversation beyond that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Madam Hall of Shock, please continue or is your budget, I mean, is your agenda exhausted?
Uh, your camera's off, man.
Yes, I'm aware. I have a bad connection. So, but, um,
Um, I wanted to, um, make sure and let you know. Yeah. So the contingent, it's just kind of coming back to where we're starting. I would be bringing to you this 1.6 as a contingency if in fact we do receive the revenue projection and we do balance out that we receive approval at, um, from you at, at preliminary passage. And then at final approval, we can, on contingent, adopt those recommendations brought forward. We do have two presentations tonight. We have community development and public works. Are there any other questions around what's been presented on the general fund side? Okay. I do believe that Ryan was our first up. Thank you very much. These are excellent questions for us and making sure that we get you what would be the best information we can.
Director Leland, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. Uh, I'll try and share the, I'll share my slides and hope to keep this very short and to the point. Um, so, and I can expand and go through any more detail than you want. Uh, first off that with public works, what we want to look at is having a secure, resilient, strong and healthy infrastructure. So we can look at opportunities, not only within the city, but also possibly expanding out into the valley. If that is something the commission would like and looking to the, to the future is that something that is going to be needed. And then also that we want to look with our solid waste plan is to have an integral solid waste system that not only looks at the city in whole, but we also work out in the county and how we can look at having recycling go up in inwards of upwards of 40% diversion rates. And we're going to do that with a lot of master plans that we have to look at. We are very behind the curve on, curve on master plans. Uh, we don't really know what we have anymore. It's been, uh, 10 to 30 years on some of these plans that we need to update so we can know our assets and know where we're going to go. So I'll just get moving in real quick. Is storm water utility maintenance? We're looking at all our collections and stormwater ponds that are out there. We are not requesting any major changes, no FTEs. And some of the capital projects that you are going to see are very limited because we have a lot of projects that we're going to carry over that I can talk about later into the project that we have a lot out there that was budgeted the previous years and it either start, excuse me, either started or we are going to move forward on them. So these are just the capital projects that are, uh, put into the budget this year. We're looking at the, uh, capital area, DNRC ponds, looking at a reroute around the museum that we are looking at right now to see if we do need to have it and, or if we can look at doing something else in that capital area to replace the main line that goes in the capital complex and by the museum, actually under part of it. But it is in fairly good shape. So we're looking at that. And then the Kmart palm and pond improvements. These are the ponds that are behind the U-Haul, the old Kmart, Kmart facility out there store. And we're going to look at some improvements to be able to manage it better and have better water quality involved. Then moving forward, we have the water fund. In the water fund, we have the treatment and then utility maintenance. Treatment does everything that is collecting of the water, treating of the water and the storage tanks and utility maintenance is the, uh, distribution. So this, we are going to ask for one new FTE as a water operator. We are looking at, uh, transition and people retiring to be able to move forward. And also none of the operators really can take any vacation during the summer or get sick just at our current staffing level. We have considerable amount of, of vacation and time on the books. So we're looking to, to rectify that and then also the transition phasing. And then our projects is combined. We're going to do a rate study that Commissioner Harlow Shock and Director Danielson brought up is we're going to look at the rates for water and sewer. And then we're looking at the system development fees to see what it really costs to be able to connect and annex into the city of Helena. And then we're getting into our master plans. We have, we have just completed the distribution and storage master plan for the water system and it sets out a lot of good goals and where we need to go. And this is a facility plan. So we are going to look at the treatment and the collection for the overall system and what needs to be done. Do we need to do taste and odors? We do need to have some filters redone. Do we look at replacing the Missouri River Plant? It's getting fairly old and outdated. The previous plan was done in 2005, so it is very, very outdated in, in, um, and need to be updated on, on that plan. Then we're looking at chemical feed plants is our overall system and pumps that are, that are being used are getting to the design age and life. And so we need to upgrade it and move to more efficient, efficient pumps and systems that are out there. And then we have a carbon feed. It's just getting very, very old out there. And with the pumps is we're looking at a new, new operations and how to feed carbon to help with the taste and odors at the 10-mile treatment plant. Then with the utility maintenance, we're looking at pressure reducing valves in our system. Basically at the, um, railroad line is the transition to our pressure zones and we have a lot of pressure reducing valves. We have no way of measuring which pressure zones are actually doing what, how much water is going through each of them. So we are going to look at it, improving them and actually having a step down system and be able to monitor them. But they are getting to the end of life too. Then we're looking at the hail Malibu connection. Uh, this is another pressure zone is we have a lot of water that is going into the hail that's coming out of the Eureka well that is not, um, not being utilized. So we need to have a, a different connection and it'll save us considerable amount of money. Then we have some shared service line. That's an annual project. We put a hundred thousand dollars. And so we can do the shared service that we've talked to many times to the commission about and then hydrant replacement, which is manual project that is moved forward. And then the wastewater, again, treatment and then utility maintenance. There's an FTE that we're looking for the pre-treatment coordinator. We are working with EPA right now. On pre-treatment, we have not been able to hire a reliable pre-treatment coordinator with a halftime position. And so we were able to hire a position, but it is an increase of a half FTE to be, to be an environmental permit manager. So they'll look at all our permits throughout the city that has huge liabilities that currently is not, um, getting the, the capacity or getting the respect that it, it deserves, I guess, best, best way to put it is we need someone in the city to focus on our permits and be able to work with EPA and DEQ. So we are luckily to be able to hire that person and the person is going to start in June. So that's just an increase to the, the pre-treatment and help satisfy DEQ and EPA. The projects again in the wastewater are the system and development fee and the rates. Then we are having another facility master plan. Again, we haven't had anything until 2007. We have a lot of upgrades that we're going to have to look at and optimization when it comes to the new permit that is being reviewed right now with DEQ. So this is going to be a very critical part of our plan to be able to look at how to expand, what do we need to do and how we can shore up our existing system to make it be where it needs to be. Then we have a SCADA system. I guess I misspelled that to upgrade. That's our control system at the plant. So we need to do that. And then we have to have some generators to be able to operate the plant in a power outage. Then our manhole project, which are lamp holes is just upgrade the manholes there. Falling apart and then putting in manholes, the shared service. And then for pre-treatment is we need to have some security. Uh, this comes up with, uh, not only EPA, um, but also with our own staff is to see the security. So we know if anyone comes and dumps something that is unneeded for our system, um, out there. Or unwanted, I should say. Then the solid waste, uh, is broken out into five funds. We have the residential collection. We have commercial, the transfer station itself, recycling, uh, landfill monitoring. And so looking at there is the residential is we are seeing a lot of increase in tonnage last year with the tipping fees. Just, I think it's because of COVID. We had a lot of permit holders come in and bring a lot more spring cleaning in their yards and a lot more use of the transfer station. So we had an increase of around $80,000. Commercial, we're seeing no major changes in operation, transfer station, nothing. And recycling is, we're seeing a big increase. Not only, not necessarily this year, but in years past in plastics bailing is the commodity no longer is anything to be said. So we are going to, we're paying to have it bailed and we're paying cardboard to be able to have it bailed. So there is increase with that. Then with the solid waste, they kind of combine all the funds to pay for the different staffing levels. There's an individual staff, staffing that goes to each of the different funds. It's all kind of intermixed. And so we are asking for one FTE that is previously just been temp services. We are using the temp services to take care of and permitting clerk. We'd like to bring it on, her on full time or that position on full time. And Lewis and Clark County through an interlocal agreement is paying the city to have a partial payment of this. It's, uh, not broken down to what the county pays and what the city pays. It all goes into one lump sum, but they are contributing for this permit coordinator, um, to take care of a lot of the permits. Majority of them are the scratch gravel permits that are out there. So this is a combined, um, and combined position that is being paid for by Lewis and Clark. Then the other big one that want to talk about is we need to do an integrated solid waste plan. This hasn't been done in the 30 years that has been out there. We have an interlocal agreement and with Lewis and Clark County and it is very entwined and they need us and we need them. And this plan will look at what we need to do for the services for say recycling, for the customers, for the commission. What do we want to do for the overall community? And this plan is going to look at it. What do we need to do? What are the costs? How can we be more efficient? Do we, what do we want to do at the transfer station? Do we want to look at moving recycling to a bigger area and bailing it on our own? This is going to answer everything and be able to get input from the public. So we can really analyze where we need to go and what we need to do. Private is Private is going to be involved. We're looking at a steering committee, um, to guide this whole plan, similar to the transportation plan that's out there that worked very well. But that's gonna be the biggest part of the solid waste plan is to bring this master plan in to be able to look at the next thirty years and how we want it to go and what are the plans and goals to achieve everything. Then we have the warm storage building that has been funded for, or been budgeted for a few years. We, uh, designed it. We've spent about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars on it and we need some more, um, money to be able to finish it. We did bid it and it was a little more expensive than what we had budgeted. The transfer station entrance, same thing, is we need to do some turn lanes on Benton Avenue and have a better entrance, uh, for safety and security reasons for staff and for the traveling pu- public on Benton. Uh, waste oil is that, this is just, uh, a great, uh, a great project, uh, because it uses waste oil, uh, front that is provided to the transfer station, people bring it in. And then we use that to heat our buildings and save a lot of money and is, uh, environmentally friendly. Then pit floor resurfacing and a tractor trailer replacement. Uh, those are the funds that we have right now. The next slides I have is carryover projects. Uh, there, you can look at the budget book and you can see a difference of what is adopted and what is amended. Uh, the difference between what is adopted and amended are the carryover projects. These are all the projects that have been carryover either last year or the year before, and some are completed, some we have to continue to go on, uh, such as Rodney Street, the West Side. These are longer projects that need to go over several fiscal years. And I could go through any of these, but in the essence of time, I will just sort of open it up for any questions that anyone would like to have.
Thank you, Director Leland. Uh, comments or questions from the commission?
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
I'm, have a handful, so fair warning.
Please.
Uh, so the first one is in terms of, um, and this is not necessarily specific on a specific piece of this budget, but, um, for the goal number one, um, for, um, Public Works, um, the first one is to effectively coordinate, manage, secure, and communicate infrastructure improvements, operational and maintenance activities, et cetera, et cetera. Does that piece include the, um, GIS project in terms of communicating with the public? And if so, is there budgetary support for that, um, in this, or is that coming from somewhere else? And I don't know if the manager has any other thoughts on that too.
Yes, the GIS is, that is another part that we need to talk about, the, the IT department. And, um, the manager can weigh in if she likes. But we have two positions of the GIS that are in Public Works that help out with transportation. And this is, uh, they are doing great work right now of developing different maps and different programs to be able to put out, uh, the, the type of information that you would like to see. Uh, but this is supported, um, in this budget and we are always looking for how we can expand it. And some of the GIS stuff is, um, a project specific, so it can be rolled into a couple of the larger projects that are out there, uh, to help with the overall GIS system.
I have to tell you, um, so thank you, you offered that up, Ryan. The GIS team and the IT team have, uh, really stepped forward to improve the, um, information that is made available. They've, um, I think far more than I've witnessed in other spaces, really, um, stood out in trying to help us integrate a new, uh, as a recruitment program for, um, business and, um, developer conversations that will improve our presence digitally and share what Helena has to offer that has not been previously made available. So if I could like steal a group of people, it would be the GIS team because they've been so forward-thinking and active and moving forward. Um, they are, are a terrific group. And, um, that said, they are also a structurally important part of our, um, track-it system. And, uh, uh, in, in addition to the mapping, uh, integration of the mapping done within each of the departments.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Um, and I think that's a super cool project and, um, really supportive of expanding that wherever we can. Um, my other question was if you, um, could maybe describe some of the, or describe the, um, transfer station improvement project and what that looks like and what the timeline is?
The, I'm assuming the transfer station entrance project that was out there
Yeah.
is, the timeline is we bid it last year and it came in more than the estimate was. And so we made some modifications to the design. And so we are waiting for the budget to be approved to put a little additional money involved. What it's going to entail is a slip lane off of Benton Avenue, turn lanes on, off of Benton Avenue into the, um, the transfer station road. Uh, there'll be some expansion of the road itself, so, um, trailers can turn around when the transfer station is closed. Some electronic gates that can be controlled by the scale house. Uh, so staff members don't have to be out there and rolling the gate shut when customers are trying to beat, beat the time to get into the transfer station and there's always a conflict there. So that's gonna be a great improvement. So we're gonna have some lighting, we're gonna